I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Town Council of May 17, 2021 to order. Would everyone please join us in the pleasure of leaving?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God in the visible and the very just as strong.
Sue, would you be kind enough to take the roll call?
Okay, I'm sorry, Marianne Rosa?
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey?
Here.
Mears?
Here.
Robert De Sina?
Here.
Jeffrey Desmaris?
Here.
Anthony Debona?
Here.
Louis Raza?
Here.
Robert Ritalik?
Here.
Rachel Ryan?
Here.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone with their hand raised, Lisa?
Yes, we have Elizabeth Waszatowsky.
Yes, please, Mrs. Waszatowsky.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Certainly.
I am pleased to be with you. It's been a long time, a long haul with COVID. But it's nice to be getting back to seeing you, our Town Council members. And I want to bring two things to your attention. The first, the first item that I'd like to speak about has to do about the Sealy property. I don't know whether you are aware, and I'm certain that you probably have seen the recording of the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Is that correct? Can I assume that you know what happened at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting?
I wouldn't assume that.
Well, the thing that I'm hoping that we can be in accord with is to say that this is a very important time in Oakville's history because somebody is looking to do something on the Sealy property. It has been laying fallow, as we know. It still is covered by more concrete than we can, any of us envision in our lifetime. But it looks like there are three gentlemen interested in seeing the property developed, and they wish to have a very important change in their zoning. A zoning which takes you from the Hillside Avenue, which is where the post office is located in Oakville, all the way to Little Henry Street, which has several houses and ends on property owned by Joe Paletta. The property, the property which is called, referred to as Sealy, Sealy is only a small part of the town of Oakville or the village of Oakville, as it has been called several times and is referred to. I don't know who changed the, the christening of that particular area, but it's, it's a good, it's a good statement. And the persons who came to speak at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May 5th were astounded that there was interest in the property. Many voices said that they have a pleasant feeling about somebody wanting to make money on it and to make it look more interesting. But there are really very great concerns about traffic because the Sealy property has only access from, oh, one and a half street, I'd call it, certainly not a very large street on any of the, of the property, the, the property, the streets that encircle it. So I come to you this evening in order to ask whether it might be possible for you, the Town Council of Watertown, which includes the little village of, of Oakville, to also do us the favor of becoming interested in Oakville and to look at a expansion of a, of a report that has already been made by Advance Connecticut in order to look at all of Oakville, not only the little piece of Oakville that is under consideration for purchase by the three gentlemen who spoke on May 5th, but all of Oakville, which is a lively and a, an area which is important to the town and especially to the town budget. We paid $15,000 for the, for the report. We, when I speak about we, it's the Town, the Town Council that laid out the money in order to pay for an 81-page report, which was delivered by Advance Connecticut in 2020. The publication, as I said, speaks only to the, to the Sealy property, has nothing, absolutely nothing to say about the pin shop, absolutely nothing to say about the lake or the pond, if you wish to call it that, which is attached to the, to the pin shop, and says absolutely nothing about the change in, in, in boundaries, making, if you will, Oakville larger, all the way to the Waterbury boundary. And straightening out that boundary when it was so done with Waterbury. I believe that the Town Council would be remiss in not considering a plan for all of Oakville. The Town Council would be remiss in allowing only the Sealy property to have a zone change, which has been unexamined. I don't think it's a very good idea to give it free rein to do anything that it wishes to with the zone change currently, as the three developers are requesting it. There needs to be some, some thought process applied to it. And of course, you are the power source for that thought process, and you are the ones whom I would suggest invite the persons who live in Oakville to have something to say about how Oakville should be developed. Again, I want to underscore that the voices are not taking away the right of the developers. What they are saying to you, the town, you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, is please recognize the fact that this is a town, a village, a location. It is where we have sunk in most of our monies because obviously buying a house and property is what we, most of us spend our, our life earnings on. And I, and, and we, the people living in Oakville, wish that we are not forgotten about. As, as an example of how curious the May 5th meeting was, I'd like to bring to your attention that the Planning and Zoning Commission isn't even aware that Main Street in Oakville is also known as Route 73. Now, it's not Route 63. Route 63 is, is a road that goes and changes its name in places to Stray's Turnpike, but Route 73 is a little, is a little jog, if you will. It's a little piece of, 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 of transportation property, which has never been considered as something that should be looked at, analyzed, and planned for in the, in the plan of conservation and development and in any records that I'm familiar with in the possession of the Town Council. So that's one thing. Another thing is that we have, we have something which could be made into a beautiful town center or a village center, if you prefer. I think the pond could be developed. The pond has a beauty to it, which usually water has in, in most locations. And I think that it would bring development to the whole of Oakville and a very successful development and one which the voices of the people living in that area, I think, would be very happy to join you, the Town Council, in thinking about the future of Oakville, all of Oakville, not only the Sealy property, which right now is either covered with geese on one end or covered with concrete on the other end. So that's, that's my, my, my pleasing, my, my, what is the right word? It is my, my question to you, whom I can't see on the, on the screen, unfortunately. So I don't know what you're thinking, and I don't know whether you're scowling, but I am asking you to please think about doing an examination of all of Oakville in order to allow any kind of expansion. That is my, my one reason for coming to speak to you today. The other, no, I have another reason, and I have only one chance at the, at the, so please allow me to say my other reason, and that happens to be the issue of noise. I'm a very proud member of the Independent Party. Independent Party are going to be speaking in large numbers about the issues having to do with noise. I'd like to remind you who have been our friends on the, on the Town Council for all the years that we've lived here, that my husband and I many times spoke before the Town Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission because of noise that has been made by various businesses. I would like to bring to your attention that we have not been listened to on the noise issue. There are more people in, right now, interested in not having the noise of, of bands appearing in our town or making unwanted, unwarranted noises. And I'm very much in concert with, and that's, that's an intended pun. I am in concert with my fellow Independent Party members who are against noise pollution in town. Thank you very much, Mrs. Rosa. Bye-bye.
Thank you for joining us and for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Is there another hand raised?
Excuse me, Catherine Camara.
Mrs. Camara, would, would you like to speak?
Excuse me. Yes, Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place. I just want to piggyback that I definitely agree with Ms. Waszatinsky, that it is a very important time in Oakville. And she pointed out that the council had agreed for a payment of $15,000 to Advance CT, and there is an 81-page report. And in that 81 pages, there's no indication in any of that that they would consider drive-through on that property. And I think that that's really important. I know you're not planning and zoning, but I do think that the Town Council, I have to agree with her, it would be nice to see the council take an interest in this because whatever happens on that property, it's going to be there for a very, very long time. And so far, I haven't seen that any council members are kind of watching over this and, and, you know, considering it. You might want to really encourage a good outcome there and a fair outcome for the people, the residents in that area. And then the second thing I just wanted to say is that I have sent two emails, I know it was probably yesterday, to the council's email address. I don't know if you've seen them yet. I am looking for explanations of comments that were made by Chairman Rosa at two meetings, and I'm hoping that I can have that information within the next week or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? No one else? Ain't no other hands raised. We'll close. Okay, Al's. Got his hand up?
Back down again.
Where is it? I can't.
Mike, excuse me, this is Al Mickel.
Okay.
My screen currently says raise the hand. So I was blinking on that thing. Maybe it was going up and down. I'm glad you saw it.
It was.
Thank you. The, I've got not necessarily comments so much, but a couple of questions. Then I think if you go through during your meeting and answer them, that, that would be helpful. The first question I have, I've asked before, and I haven't got an answer, but I think it's due soon. There was money paid to a company for the study on the location, location and site applicability for the senior center and the police station. My last understanding was it was due sometime in April or May, and now it's April or May. So if somebody can update me on those, where that study is, I'd appreciate it. Now, the one, the next one is on the sale of town property, which is an executive session, and I don't need to know how much it is or who it is, but I'm curious about what's being sold. The annex has been sold. The old town hall has been sold. So I am not sure what else the town has to sell. So if somebody, maybe after the executive session, I could find that out. Now, there's also two ordinances on the agenda tonight, and the second ordinance has to do with voting, and it says changing the number of people and how we can vote on the next election. And it says possibly the Town Council. I'm not sure why it's a possibility, but it doesn't seem to be a possibility for the school board. Maybe that's just a wording area, and I'm hoping that could be clarified. Now, it also says we've bought ten Windows computers, which I think is an excellent idea, along with the many more that were purchased previously by the town manager. And currently, Windows requires Windows 360 operating system. And that's a yearly subscription. And I'm just curious of on whose account and what account that's going to be placed upon. And lastly, about the funds for the police, special duty, and it says possibly offset. Usually, all that is completely offset. And if somebody could explain if there's a reason why it's only going to be possibly offset. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's raising their hand? No? Okay, we will close public participation or public comment and move on to the minutes. Is there a motion?
Yep, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes from May 3, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
If there are anyone opposed, anyone abstaining? We have three that are abstaining. Mr. Raza, Mr. De Sina, and Mr. Desmaris. The motion does pass.
I move to approve the meetings from the Budget Public Hearing dated April 21, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or any comment or any question? They were quite lengthy as far as the minutes went, so I. Okay. All those in favor of approving them as we receive, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Next comes Chair's comments. We have a resignation letter from Michelle Wallace, who is a member of the Park and Recreation Commission, and unfortunately, she has resigned. We also received an email from the Board of Education to advise us that Rob Mikowski, who was appointed to the Cable TV Advisory Council as the Board of Ed Representative, has resigned from that council. Okay. Move on to the Town Manager's report.
Good evening, Honorable Chairwoman and members of the Watertown Town Council. I'd like to give you an update on what's happened, been going on around town for the last couple of weeks. This past Saturday was our last vaccine clinic. I would like to thank Waterbury Hospital for partnering with our community in this effort, and we have a rough estimate of administering over 2,500 vaccinations. I want to again thank all the volunteers who have given their time to make this effort a success. I will be publicly announcing the opening of the town hall by week's end. Members of the public will be required to wear masks while inside town public buildings. However, staff upon proof of vaccination and beyond the two-week window after the second vaccination will be allowed to be in town public buildings without masks. This change in policy will not preclude my office in setting more restrictive measures as we open up public meetings. I'm considering opening up for public meetings on June 7. Town Council Boards commissioned meetings to proceed with public attendance, which would be on a first-come basis. The meetings held in the council chambers shall not exceed 25 occupants total, to include councilors, commissioners, town personnel, staff, and members of the public. Each occupant shall wear a face mask and continue to practice social distancing. This directive may be adjusted depending on other meeting room sizes. Our finance department, our Tyler software training is being conducted, and we are on track for a launch date of July 1, 2021. We have successfully refinanced over $10 million in bonds for savings of approximately $750,000. I would like to thank Suzette Pohn, our Finance Director, for all her hard work in completing this task. She is currently working with our bonding agent to develop a restructuring program for this savings. We've conducted some Zoom training. We've scheduled two webinars on EQ, Emotional Intelligence, and Customer Service. This training was offered to staff, and it was provided by our, by our insurance carrier, Cigna. It is a no-cost seminar offered as part of our EAP Employees' Assistance Program, and it's the, our first webinar was this past Friday, and we had more than 25 staff attend. Staff feedback was very positive, and our next webinar is scheduled for next week. We're still in negotiations with White Collar. Economic Development, we'd like, I'd like to thank Commissioners Aga Antonetti, Joe Seacrest, our Economic Development Coordinator, Lauren Laporta, and State Representative Joe Paletta for collaborating on and creating a webinar with Executive Director Scott Dolch of the Connecticut Restaurant Association. The webinar addressed the application process and guidelines for the SBA Restaurant Revitalization, Revitalization, sorry, I'm getting a little tongue-tied on that one, Fund, which was provided, which provided $28.6 billion to the food industry. This effort was initiated and completed within one week's time. We started from ground zero with no contact information for the small businesses of our town that we wanted to target. After building an initial contact list, we got on the phones and notified potential business owners that could benefit from this effort. The day of the seminar, we had more than 15 business owners in attendance, and for those that could not make the webinar, we emailed a copy to them and also posted the videos to social media. During the process, we identified a communication issue with some of our businesses owners and hope to address this with our new website, which will be available to be viewed in multiple languages. Interviews have been conducted, concluded, and we are preparing to make an offer to fill the position of Senior Center Coordinator. Shortly thereafter, we will be opening the senior center and getting senior programs up and running. In Planning and Zoning, our Municity software is to go live this month. We've had some issues with credit card acceptance and are working on a resolution for that. We've continued to move forward in the EV, the Electric Vehicle Initiative, and we are fulfilling our obligations to that program. Our land use manager will be updating regulations applicable to land use, and his efforts are to make more efficient layout of our regulations. Our Public Works Director job posting will close tomorrow, May 18, and I am in the process of assembling an interview panel for that position. Fire Department, the deputy chief has applied for a large grant that would help us pay for earpaks that are so needed, so much needed for the fire department. We're in the midst of applying for that grant, and our fire chief has reported that our membership has increased by six volunteers over the last month or so, which brings the department up to about 85 members. Our fire marshal is internally the implementation of the Municity software has allowed for the fire marshal and building official to complete electronic permit sign-offs, which has saved time for both departments and provided a more efficient process for residents and business customers. The fire marshal will be promoting proactive fire extinguisher training for businesses. And on a good note, Watertown has had a fifth-grade fire prevention poster winner for Litchfield County, and that student is from the St. Mary Magdalene School. Also like to report on the town clerk, Lisa Dalton. Our town clerk was elected to the second vice president slot to the Connecticut Town Clerks Association. She will be the first Watertown Town Clerk to be elected to this position and one of very few from Litchfield County. This is an honor for our town and for Mrs. Dalton. Normally, these positions are held by town clerks from larger municipalities. Mrs. Dalton has been busy. She has also completed her accreditation for Master Connecticut Town Clerk. She will be only one of 33 town clerks to receive this accreditation in Connecticut. Park and Rec, I just want to update our Memorial Day Parade, scheduled for May 31, 2021, starting at the Watertown Plaza and commencing at 10:00 a.m., heading south to the Oakville Green. We are expecting an increased showing of National Guard members this year, as well as a National Guard flyover. If council members are interested in walking or riding in the parade, please let me know so that we can plan for golf carts if needed. Park and Rec has also scheduled some outdoor concerts for this upcoming summer. Our town hall project, we're continuing to work through the punch list for the project and moving forward to completing those items. The council chamber audiovisual equipment has been started on the install, and we are expecting the installation to be complete by the end of May. As you probably noticed, the contractor has begun addressing landscaping with some of our new shrubbery outside. For the Police Department, the chief has intentionally, I'm sorry, internally posted for the Watertown Police Deputy Chief's position, and he has scheduled an interview process for June. He's also instituted proactive training addressing crowd control with the newly donated shields and batons, firearm taser transition training, First Amendment training for command staff, and additional officers are receiving CIT, Crisis Intervention Training, with a goal to have all officers trained in CIT. The motorcycle has been ordered with an expectant arrival date of June, and Officer Buester has been chosen as the first Watertown Motorcycle Officer and will attend training later this year. That's all I have. Madam Chairwoman?
That's, that's enough. I should have indicated in the chairman's report, I could give some information to Mr. Mickel with regard to one of the questions he asked with regard to what property was for sale. It is the old town hall that we're going to be discussing, and the original buyer backed out of the offer that they made to us. So that's why it's going to be before us again. Okay, let's move on.
I move to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to appoint Daniel DeVito as a, as the Watertown Representative to the Nuggetuck Valley Council of Governments' Regional Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I'm going to abstain, ma'am.
Kendem Erz is abstaining. The motion passes unanimously.
I move to refer the following proposed modifications to the Watertown Code of Ordinance, to the Watertown Town Council Ordinance Subcommittee. One, modification of the current noise ordinance, Watertown Code of Ordinances, Section 12-31, how you pronounce that, et cetera.
To better spell out.
To better spell out conditions and requirements for use of loudspeakers or amplified sound of any kind, Watertown Code of Ordinances, Section 12-35. And two, a new ordinance regarding the filling of vacancies on the Board of Education and possibly the Town Council at an election. Current statutes limit the number of candidates that any party may nominate and the number that any person may vote for. General Statute, Section 9-204B, permits the town to modify that rule by ordinance.
Do we have a second to submit these to the ordinance commission?
I second it.
Does anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $7,643.05 to the Police Department's overtime line item. Funds received through grants for the FBI Gang Task Force and for DUI littering, speeding, and cell phone enforcement. Second.
At the second? Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to set a special town meeting to be held on Monday, June 7th, 2021, at 6:45 PM at Watertown Town Hall to consider an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $220,500 for police special duty services. Funds are offset by the revenue from vendors to which services are supplied. Funds to be reimbursed to the police special duty non-town accounting and the special duty town account.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $2,673.72 for the purchase of six Windows 10 computers for the register of voters and town clerk's office. Funds to be reimbursed through a matching grant from the Connecticut Secretary of State Office to comply with state mandated requirements.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution appropriating $3,778.51 from the General Fund for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
And we need a second. Mr. DeVone, a second, and are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to enter into executive session with the town manager and members of the town council present for Item 9, Executive Session A, Town Manager Evaluation, and then with the town attorney to discuss Item 9, the sale of town property.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. DeVone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously to go into executive session. In regular session, and we have a motion under the town manager's compensation.
I move to approve a 2% raise of the town manager effective on his one-year anniversary date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just for clarification, we had to take this action tonight by charter. The charter requires that, uh, an evaluation and compensation be set 30 days before the end of the fiscal year. So that's why this matter has come before us tonight, and we're acting upon it. Does anyone else want to make comment or have a question?
When this is one-year anniversary?
November 1st.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn?
There is another motion here, um, on the table, motion to table. Let's postpone any action.
I move to postpone any action on, uh, the authorizing the town manager to enter in an agreement for the sale of town property.
Second.
Any discussion or comment? All those in favor of postponing any discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Do we have a question to adjourn?
The move.
And a second.
Second.
Want to be original back, right?
Yes, right.